This conference will now be recorded.
Can folks hear us who are remote? You have to turn your audio completely off. Okay, let's. Okay, go ahead to the start of the meeting, I'll be with you.
We will go ahead, so we're going to get started with the current audio open. So first is open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Does anyone joining us remotely have anything for not related to the agenda?
Someone from the public that's listening, just say hello.
We can hear you now.
There we go.
Hi.
Okay, well, so we know it works. So I guess we'll move on to the next item, which is announcements and staff report. Paul had a few announcements in the packet, which includes, I think, my biggest one, which was that the council last week did adopt the amendments that we forwarded them for the official map. They had a pretty robust conversation, as well as multiple people waiting in from the public on different items, and they did adopt it, had to be forwarded with no changes to our. Anyone up here have other announcements? Okay, then we decided, we were, you know, Paul hasn't anything close, and later, we had decided we were going to do minutes next, which is out of order, but we're going to do number eight, which is the meeting minutes.
I know that we include the minutes of August 18th, August 25th, August 31st, September 14th, September 20th, September 10th, and September 30th, with any corrections made by the commission that I invited.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion over minutes? I think it's seven meetings worth.
I made a few notes on them, which I could send to you, that did look quite minor, but they do the meeting of percentage. Do you want to send them to you, Jessica, or to Paul?
I guess I'm not sure, do we need to vote on them, though?
Well, that was just a question. Yes, I guess we do need to vote on them.
Yeah, then I think maybe you need to distribute them around. Are they for all seven of the meeting minutes, or?
No, they're spread throughout, so I can go back to them and send Paul just for those that have. And there are things like. Using the word "reg" instead of "array," I think might affect the meaning of this. Very few.
Are they only in statements that you made, or other people's as well, like catching type? Are they only state from statements that you made, or are they just?
They mostly relate to me, because I don't know what others, whether others want to make corrections. Yes. They're mostly related to things I said.
So I guess procedurally, I'm not sure if we can vote and approve them if you want to make minutes or make changes later by email.
Okay, you want to do that for them?
Maybe get their actions, kind of passionate, and delay, and then you want to send us all those corrections.
Yeah, I guess I'm not a big fan of just saying we approved them, but then Michael's going to change them later, I don't think that.
Yeah, but things like "subpoena" and "subpoena." They're not a lot of them.
So if, I mean, there's no harm in waiting a week or two weeks, I think, right? So why don't we just do that? Because that seems an efficient use of everybody's time.
Okay, so that seems like that makes sense. So if others also have changes to the minutes, maybe they can all be kind of collected together. Yes.
Please do.
Yes, okay, so we do have a motion on the table to pass them. Do you want to retract your motion? Motion and second, retract. So the motion has been retracted. Meeting minutes for all seven meetings are going to be reviewed individually, and changes will be sent to Paul prior to the next meeting. What happened in front of us? Okay, so that was, we've moved the minutes up, and then are we back with everyone?
Yes, I think we're okay. The audio is being used through my laptop, so just make sure that you speak into the mics so that everybody can hear. And I've asked people to let us know if they can't hear us, so.
So do you see there's been some more people joining us, and you know the audio is having some trouble? So I'm just going to go back to the open, to the public for items not related to the agenda in case someone couldn't hear us. And I'm also going to let Paul make any announcements he wants to make before we move on.
Um, I don't think I've got any announcements for the moment, thank you.
Okay, great, you had a bunch in the agenda here, so. So now we are, we're skipping around a little bit, and maybe not everyone heard. So we went through the minutes. We changed the agenda, we're going to go to five next, the discussion about the LDRs, and then circle back to the work plan, because it was determined that in the discussion of the LDRs, some people may identify some more things that want to go into the work plan, so.
Right, so and during five, if we have something we want to discuss to determine that goes into this draft before it goes to the city council as well.
So we are on five, which is the initial review, initial feedback and big picture items related to the draft land development amendments, and these have been warned for public hearing. There are a few things that staff highlighted in the packet that I think it makes sense to start with those, with the feedback.
I mean, you're welcome to, I think, yeah, wherever you would like to start, it's fine with me. It's not mine to, this is really sort of for you guys to sort of see what you've been hearing in the community, and I'm happy to share what I've heard, but it was not my intent to dominate that.
Yeah, there's nothing in the package pertaining to that.
Yeah, okay, so I had kind of as a prompt for this item, sent out a little homework to each of you, and I guess I also just wanted to circle back and say that it's been a huge effort to get to where we're at and to, you know, get something together, warrant for public hearing. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into that, and I also really respect each of you and each of your different thoughts and opinions that you've shared along the way. I know that not all of them have made it into the final draft that has been warned. And to that respect, I thought it was important, you know, especially for me, to be able to kind of have a good understanding of where people are at and kind of why they did or didn't vote for certain things, or were not comfortable with kind of the draft as a whole, you know, knowing that. You know, I'm sure that no commissioners are in 100% agreement with all of the items in there, but, you know, I think some people felt like on balance, it was ready to go, at least a public hearing. So in my homework, I said, I would love to hear individual items or big picture. What is tipped or would likely tip the balance for you to support the draft LDRs? Just as kind of a prompt for discussion that I think, you know, if people have a few items that are really still kind of sticking in their mind, you know, we're going to have a conversation about them, we may be able to actually hear that there's some common ground on particular items, or, you know, even if there is some change to the draft, eventually, you know, at least how we would kind of articulate, kind of where we were at, what some of those issues were that there was not agreement, as much agreement on. So to that end, I think having kind of an open discussion about where people were at is a really good thing for us, and I'm also sensitive to the idea that we do have a draft out there that we've asked people to make comments on. So I guess I was thinking that as we have this discussion, if there are some items that are identified, that maybe we feel like we might want to make a change to the draft, we can maybe identify those and talk about them at the public hearing, but not make a definitive vote, because it would be really nice to kind of hear that public input before making like a definitive change to the draft, just in the interest of.
Yeah, there isn't a process to make a change to the draft at this point, right?
No, so, so I think, you know, maybe we'll just kind of hear some things that are common grounds that we can bring forward to our discussion following, you know, public input and public hearing. So I did actually get some homework and thoughts back from both Duncan and Bernie, who aren't able to be here, so. But it might make sense to share those first, just kind of chronologically, if that makes sense. And then, you know, commissioners who are here who can share their items, does that make sense? Okay, so I was trying to, Bernie's, which I received first. See, I think this is short enough to actually read, so. You are correct, and I certainly had issues with some items in particular. I think it was an overreach for us to regulate more stringent than state regulations with respect to wetlands. I also do not support making mandatory legal and permanent conservation of land in the conservation duty, among other things. The meaning is that I voted to send forward was in recognition of the hard work that the staff and our consultants put in to get us to this point. To me, and no, that signifies that the work we accomplish is not improvement over existing regulations. So that sounds like inbound, see, they identified a few things. It felt like it was ready for public comment.
Are you going to send Bernie's comments around to the rest?
I can, I, I hope not. Yeah. I'm going to look them up for commissioners who are in the round. I'm sorry, I need to try to see these out, but I might have to say what they mean. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, isn't a conversation apparent where people's unlocked in here? Okay, so Duncan also wasn't able to be here tonight. As you know, I did vote to move the LDRs along, and I think the whole commission should be commended for the amount of work we put into them. We are being pulled in a couple of different directions, with the main for both conservation and housing. I feel that the work we've done shows a fair balance between two, and as we said, reflects compromise on both sides. In part twelve, we have a much more robust and clear set of standards for resource protection than we had previously. I know there is a push to add more areas to the level three resource list, that's one in agriculture land, we don't feel that they rise to that level. They can be protected via other avenues, and in some cases, represent the only developable land of some parcels. We have added a whole new level of protections to having cat blocks, connectors, and private reflectors, presented as a state to work regularly. The PD is a little tougher, project digest. We're trying to cram what we should have had a couple of months before, kind of three weeks. There's still some issues over density or excess density concerning. If developers and developers present a need to max out density currently, how will this scenario play out with a being more dense form of development? I do think Mark's idea of allowing some flexibility on the amount of land from 60% to 70% does have some merit. We would just need to make sure that the same amount of development over such a larger space is not on more. As a whole, I would prefer to spend some more time on the PD work, but believe the two are moving forward along with new solution and master plan regulations are better than sharing. And then some comments about on white work, just for later.
Can I just, there's a request from the, a couple of requests for everybody. Try to speak slowly if you can, because it's getting through the big audio here, so if you can just try to remember to speak slowly tonight, that would be helpful.
And it's actually been our. Well, there's the masks.
I can, but.
Performable?
Well, I guess that was the comments that I've gotten from, by email, from the missing commissioners. So I don't know who wants to go first, or if commissioners, do you have some thoughts as well? So I don't know who wants to go first, or if commissioners, do you have some thoughts as well, Ted?
Do you understand? I mean, some of the issues that.
Yeah.
Some issues that, you know, there's quite a lot to wonder right now, and quite a couple of it. It is a hill property and one of the things that's involved in the food resistance now, like, you know, it's not in the southeast quadrant. It really sort of the name in the southeast quadrant. But I mean, that property is, in some ways, maybe the most important property right now, South Burlington. City center, that's a very large piece of, you know, land. And, you know, what we do with it or what the developer has with it is a concern. I think that I'm not absolutely clear what the developer has in mind. All due respect to him, you know, if he agree or if they want stores. Sure, if they're really residential developer and that would be more of my priority in that area is residential and there's like pad. The gym, the, the, the stadium and the parks and so on. That, that's my concern you were talking about, R seven, and I know it's misleading, but putting this low on, on it being R seven, but it's probably, you know, why everyone, I was going or something. I don't make a discussion, but, but it. So I apologize, but it was not the.
Before you go further, can I, can I try something just for the audio? Can everybody try turning off their mics and just seeing how it works if we talk without it?
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Is that any better for members of the public? They said better. So I'm just going to turn off the audio system entirely.
You just have to talk loud for Sue.
We still have to speak loudly for Sue, though. But it's echoing less.
I'll move a little bit.
All right.
I got my mask in the max.
So, you know, the hill property is a concern. You know, I had all communications with Paul today and I really appreciated, you know, I think pointed out what would, what would occur with the hill property if rather than just say R seven, if we said we would also make it a conservation PUD. And it gave me, you know, several points that, you know, would be really helpful if he would maybe share with the committee, but. So I'm just raising, I, I just don't have a handle on what the project's going to look like. And it's frustrating voting on a change of zoning with, you know, without knowing what exactly, or at least some general idea, what will be there. I know there will not be a Walmart store, so that's, that gives me great comfort. But other than that, so I kind of refer to all maybe and just it. You know, because my feeling is, is that maybe the PUD as part of that component might serve a better way to have more housing, but I may be totally wrong.
Yes, Paul?
So I was trying to. I'm happy to elaborate if you'd like.
I'm sorry, Paul Connor, I apologize, you know. You know, I could, I could read the piece that you gave me with regard to it, but I guess maybe there's a if notes with regard to if we did not have it R seven, if we had it something else.
Sure. So, um, there's two layers of the zoning for a, a, an area like the Hill Farm and the other areas in that same, the other parcels in that same area. There's the underlying zoning and then there's the PUD requirement. In the current draft, what you have is the R seven NC zoning, which is residential and a limited amount of commercial. And I'll talk about, I'll go into detail on that in a second, but that's sort of, that's the most important part is that it's mixed of residential and commercial. And then on top of that, you have said that in that zoning district, that a PUD is required. And at this time, there's only one PUD type eligible, which is a traditional neighborhood development PUD. So what that effectively means is that anything that's a hazard or level one resource is excluded from the, from the PUD. It has to be subdivided off and created onto its own parcel and left alone essentially. The remainder of the parcel then becomes subject to the TND rules, which is, as you looked at them back in the spring, it's 65 to 85% residential. There's a 15% minimum that has to be civic space, which is active, active recreation areas. And then I forget the exact numbers, but five to 20 or five to 15% can be mixed use and mixed use could be the, it could be any of the commercial uses that are allowed in the R seven NC district. Um, it could be a mix of, you know, housing above a, a commercial use, or it could be something like a community building or something like that. That's, that's a gathering point that's not necessarily commercial. So the only role that the underlying zoning plays effectively in this is determining what non-residential uses are allowed. Everything else from the R seven NC sort of becomes irrelevant because density is calculated by building type through the traditional neighborhood development PUD type. Building size is determined by the PUD type and subdivision and natural resources are dealt with by their own thing. But that's, that's what the current draft would do. Let's say you change the underlying zoning and you said, um, R four, I'll pick something else. That would mean that essentially the same thing can be built, but the mixed use component, i.e. the non-re, or non-residential component shrinks down in terms of what allowed commercial uses can be there because the R four allows fewer variety in, in, in commercial uses. Regardless of which commercial uses are allowed in the TND, the scale of them is very small. It is intended to be a neighborhood scale, so it's not a it's really, the, the description of the buildings is something that looks like it basically looks like a home. It's, it's, you know, it's the size of, uh, I'm trying to think of a good example in South Burlington, the, the Aviation Deli, that kind of scale of things. Um, so that's, that's the current draft. So the underlying zoning, the only really important change, if you're going to stay with the TND being required, was determining what uses you would allow. So if you kept it the way it was today and the current adopted zoning of industrial, you have sort of this mismatch where you're saying it's a residential district and yet for, for the purposes of TND, but the underlying zoning is saying industrial and largely not residential, which feels like you're crossing wires. So that's the main purpose of changing the underlying zoning was just to say what non-residential uses and to allocate it as a residential district to begin with. If you were to then say, um, well, what if we allow a, in the future, once you, you build them a neighborhood commercial PUD type or a campus PUD type, which are some of the other ones you've talked about, then it would open up to they could choose one or two or all three of them if they wanted based on the sizes of what's allowed with those PUD types and the uses from the underlying zoning. The last thing I'll mention is conservation PUD. Um, right now, it appears to me that in that zoning district, the R seven NC, that you can be a conservation PUD only if you have 50% of the property being hazards of level one resources. A, it does not appear that it reaches that number. Um, I don't know for sure until there's a wetlands delineation done, but it does not appear that it does. So that's not an eligible option likely. If it became an eligible option, then what the property owner would have the ability to do is they would have to conserve 70% of the land. Then what comes in, the underlying zoning becomes more important in that scenario because A, they get to transfer the density from the rest of the property. So whether it's in this case, it would be seven units an acre. If you made it an R four, it would be four units an acre. Either way, with big numbers, the likelihood is that other factors will determine the upper density before um, a mathematical number does. On the non-residential side, uh, sorry, still on the residential side, there aren't building types per se in the, into the underlying zoning. It just says single family, two family, multifamily, which is what our citywide zoning is for the most part today. And there's a general standard in our subdivision that you asked us to put in that says a mix of housing types. That would be the, the extent of it. There is a cap in that district of 28 feet of the height of buildings and you have removed the ability for that to be waived via PUD because you, because that's not, that's not a choice. There are limited authority for the DRB to grant some exceptions if the circumstances call for it, but generally speaking, that becomes your, your height. The other big difference that happens in the conservation PUD is it does not say any allocation of residential or non-residential. So any of the allowed uses in the zoning district could be what is done across whatever portion of the property they choose. So if they chose to say the R seven NC allows offices, in theory, it could be entirely offices, no housing. If the R seven NC allows housing, which it does, it could be entirely housing, no offices. There isn't a requirement in the conservation PUD that says you must allocate X percent to different types of uses.
It could be a mix.
Could be a mix. It could be anything from all one to all the other and anything in between. Conceivably, that could be a required thing, but it's not in this draft. Does that answer your question, Ted? Okay.
If this, if this was to be conservation PUD, it could be a conservation PUD R four, or it could be a conservation PUD R seven, provided it meets some, some other requirements. Or, or the, the buildable, the 30% in, in the case of the conservation PUD, 30%.
Michael, I cannot hear your words.
You need to come and sit right next to me. And I'll start over again. I mean, I'll say that again. And I'll place you. If it's a conservation PUD, um, the 30, in the 30%, we could have a TND. Is that correct?
That's an option, yes. That's, that's currently in the draft. That's the applicant's choice.
Or in R four, he would live with the, with the regulations that regulate R four or in the case of that we're looking at, which is R seven NC. He would, he or the lander in this case would have to live with the conditions which apply to R seven NC. Is that right?
That's correct. So whichever the under, in the conservation PUD, uh, an applicant would have the choice of either the, um, the, the underlying zoning district or in any district that allows a TND, a TND if there's enough space for it, which in this case there would be.
So is there, is there a way we could, there a way we could achieve this that whatever the zoning is currently, it's, it's, we, the commission voted to make it R seven NC. Is there a way to combine that and making it requiring to be a conservation PUD? I'm, I'm asking this because this is a very, I think it's a unique piece of property and we've had, you all know, on numerous occasions when this has been out for discussion, we've had a lot of public input and public sentiment that, oh my goodness, we, we must try and save as much of this space as much as possible. And that's what has guided me. I can't speak for, for my colleagues, but that, that was one of the issues that guided me to go in this, ask the commission to go in this direction. It really is a special parcel, special whatever you want to call it. It has significant visions to the west. And it's just a very, very important piece of land in the context of, of the city of South Burlington. So conserving, conserving some of it is very important to me and I sense why I felt from the public input, input that it would be very important to the people we represent landing the residents and citizens of South Burlington.
Just a shot. One last question, Paul. Maybe after the end, will you give any idea the amount of potential housing units that could be based on what we have in the draft at this point? And if you don't, you don't, you don't have, and again, it can be just an estimate. It could be 100, 100 units off, but it just.
I only get a buffer of 100 units?
You have a buffer.
Um, so let me try, I'll, I'll try to do it on the fly as I'm speaking here. So the property, the main property that you're talking about, the Hill Farm property is, is about 108 acres. Currently in your draft, 39 of those are in a habitat block. Um, I'm going to just say, I'm going to round that off to 40 in case there's a little bit of wetland or something like that. Um, there's probably some additional land that is not buildable for one reason or another, like it's um, too close to the interstate and you've got an interstate overlay, but for simplicity purposes, I'm going to say of the 108, let's say that 68 of those are developable. So from the developable, the next thing that you would do is you would assign your allocations, right? So we talked about how 15% goes to civic space. Oh, I'm sorry. First I have to take out the streets and, um, the streets and other things. So let me take out 10% for public infrastructure. That might be low, it might be high, but from your 68, let's say we bring it down to 60 for round numbers. Follow me so far?
Yep.
So from 60 acres, then we do our allocations. It says 65 to 85% residential. So of that, of the 60 acres, that's this is where my elementary school math teacher said, would say, this is where you need to be able to do your times tables in your head.
Beautiful calculator too, Paul. I actually did that exact parcel with that.
So 39 to 50 acres, let's say. So 40 to 50 acres could be residential of that. Um, within that, you've seen in the TND that there's a whole range of what can be done. Realistically, I think that the example that Mark Kane brought forward back in the spring seemed like a fairly reasonable example of what could be built, and that was at about eight units an acre. So call it. Net density. So on the 40 to 50 acres, call it eight units an acre. So 322. Okay.
I used your calculator, came up, but I didn't have any commercial, only, only residential. And it comes, my calculations came to 8.1 units per acre net density. And it was, but, but it's R seven, so it would have to be reduced to sevens.
No, R seven, in a TND, that's irrelevant.
So it's 495 total dwelling units, just spread across the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different one category we have.
That seems a little bit high to me, Michael. Did you, that represents.
All right. What I did was I said, uh, there's 68. All right. What I did was I said, uh, there's sixty-eight buildable acres.
That sixty-eight developable acres.
Uh, after the, well, and then, and then buildable becomes sixty-one point two.
Yep.
And then I worked from there down, but the same thing as you, but I put in, you know, fifty each of
Okay.
Multiplex four, fifty, multiplex three, townhouse detached, duplex stacked, what you call duplex attached, and the text signal, the text houses. Yeah, but that was a hundred and ninety-five, the text and fifty of each of the others. That's how it came up to the the number of four ninety-five. In the sixty-one point, one of the acres. I think it's more or less the same.
Yeah, but isn't from that sixty, don't you have to have the the fifteen percent civic space?
Well, I took up, I took the residential, a sixty-five percent mixed use. Civic space, ten percent, and unallocated, five. So it's quite, it's quite dense um in that portion. Now, if it was a T, if it was a conservation P U D, um then, of course, you'd have to recalculate because you're dealing with thirty percent of of hundred and eighty acres.
Can I ask for a a clarification? I appreciate that we're getting into this. This calculator is awesome. I just pulled it up again so it can answer any. There's so many different scenarios that can be. I'm a little bit confused about why we're doing that right now. How does that relate to the question about, and what is our this goal with this? Because that we have other things, you know. Are we, are we just coming up with a list of things to tell you about tonight that are concerns for people? Or are we hoping to maybe make some resolve some questions tonight?
Well, I mean, what I understand, if you don't mind me answering, is that I understood we were supposed to raise the questions that we had so far. And I had a question about Hill property. Um, because we're changing the zoning and and that was sort of my question and getting clarification of how many units and so on. So that's, that's, we're not voting on it or.
Yeah, we can leave the the calculator as far as I'm concerned with that. Uh, we've spent enough time on it, but I'm saying, so my question is, um, what would we have to do, Paul, to make it possible for that property to be a conservation P U D?
As, um.
Let's say, let's say I owned it and I wanted I wanted to make it into, to use the conservation P U D as a vehicle for my way of developing. What would, what would we?
So if you wanted to to enable it, um, then I suppose that you could either lower the threshold and say that if you have thirty percent um natural resources, hazards and level ones that you're eligible, or as is the case with some lower density zoning districts like the R one and R two, you just allow it. Um, R one, R two allow conservation P U D if you, if the applicant chooses. I think.
It's not something that I haven't asked before about the fifty percent. I asked several times that we should think about either eliminating it or reducing it. Um, because I was worried that, maybe not in this case, but hypothetically, if I own this property and I want to do a conservation P U D, um, I'm not permitted to because of that fifty percent threshold.
But what, can I ask, on that note, couldn't a landowner have the right to conserve seventy percent of their land? And then if they did that and they ended up with the thirty percent?
Nothing is stopping somebody from saying, I'm subdividing out sixty acres, seventy acre, eighty acres, and the remainder of it is becoming uh to to, for permanent conservation. And then the remainder of it's going to be a T N D.
And then that T N D would be able to be based on what it can fit with the housing type. It doesn't have to, so it's not, so I mean, that to me seems like what a landowner can have the right to do.
Yes, yes, Monica. Both you and Paul have said this in the past, that a landowner can conserve anything he wants. But there's a public interest, at least in my view, uh, in this particular property. And it's not, and my sense is that this property unit doesn't, doesn't want to conserve a whole lot of it. And so that's the, that's the the concern.
So and just.
You could, you said before that if anybody can conserve as much land as he or she likes and uh it's a simple subdivision. Right?
Uh, yes. Well, they would still have to do a master plan for the remainder of it. Um, but yes.
So I think what I'm hearing is that on Michael's list of ongoing thoughts, he continues to think that this area should be a conservation P U D um area. That, that kind of cluster of air properties that
against development.
We've now made the R seven and C kind of up in that area.
Yeah.
That's.
R seven and C in the thirty percent.
I, are you, the problem with that is I think it would preclude single-family homes. And that's a concern I have. I mean, I.
Right. It wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily preclude it, but it would not prohibit somebody from choosing not to do any. Because they'd be granted a lot of density and there's no requirement if, unless you go with the T N D for a mix of the housing types um quite as formally as there is in the T N D. They could also choose to not do housing at all. I think that's that's, that's the tricky. Now, you know, there, these, none of these things are set in stone. You can write them to achieve the goals that you want. I guess my, my strong encouragement all along has been identify the vision that you have for what you want to see in that part of the city and create one or more options that make sure that implement that.
That, that's fair. And, and, yeah. It's not my property, but my vision for that property would be conserve, conserve area in the south where it's contiguous with uh with Wheeler and uh to be parkland property. And develop the north, the thirty percent in the north, which is uh on, you know, close to Heinsberg Road. So, you know, good place for workforce housing, good place for affordable housing, good place for some commercial. That would be, that would be my preferred vision, if you like, but I'm not the property owner. So everything, the only way we can achieve things is through regulation. Sorry.
Are you welcome?
I'm good. Thank you.
I have, I have some, I I've misunderstood the assignment because I actually voted to forward it. So, but there were some outstanding things. Um, I mean, just in general, I am so proud of the Article twelve work that we have done to significantly improve our protection of our core natural resources over what currently exists. Um, I, I think we should all be very, very proud of that work. Because of that, I do just continue to have an issue with requiring conservation P U Ds um on parcels that have less than seventy percent natural resource, level one hazard and N R P. Because I feel that the Article twelve work we have done is so substantial. So that's just in general, my my concern. Um, I wouldn't want to compromise those Article twelves to any extent. Um, I, so that's overall. Um, I also specifically I, I'm, I disagree with um the conversion to N R P on the land between Nolan Farm and is it Dorset, that that area there. Be mostly because to me, it it seemed to be putting an unfair strain on the two middle parcels, whereas if we're going to be requiring conservation P U Ds, that would have been, to me, a very fair and protective measure instead, especially since we have not addressed the T D R marketplace. So I, I, I wasn't, I'm not a fan of that, but I accept that I was in the minority on that vote. Um, this is a Article eighteen oh three. Um, we did not um evolve the draft language that's in there. Um, there was some discussion about it in a couple of meetings and I uh I think I I misunderstood. I thought we agreed that we were going to add this other language and then Paul corrected me that we actually, as a committee, didn't discuss it. But it is when, when we are enabling a childcare facility to uh the, to waive the housing preservation fee if they convert a house to childcare, fully support that, as does the Affordable Housing Committee. But the concern is that, um, unfortunately, many childcare facilities don't live last forever. Um, so what happens to that parcel, which was a home and then childcare, if it then no longer is childcare? And Paul had an idea, which we just did not put into the language yet, but the Affordable Housing Committee supported that language, which is to um lock in, at the time the house converts to childcare, lock in what that housing fee would have been and have it run with the land in the event that the childcare facility closes. So that it can then be dealt with either to go back to housing and then the fee is waived, goes away, or if it is sold off to another commercial user, whatever, that uh the fee would then be paid. So I think that's just a technicality and it would be very meaningful to have that in place before it goes to the city council. And then finally, I think this is the easiest way for me to say this. It does not seem like this is a planning commission purview, but I just want to get this idea out there. One of the reasons I've been concerned about pushing conservation P U D on these other parcels is because of the priority it's giving to level two lands over the others, from my perspective. However, the flip side of that is, if we are to require conservation P U Ds, I think that the city should consider removing the related T D Rs from within that seventy percent permanently conserved area, thus reducing the balance of the T D Rs that need to be sold and instead instantly permanently conserve that land. Don't wait for the landowner. We're already telling them they have to conserve it. So let's just take care of that right now. Let's remove those T D Rs from the marketplace, pin that land and permanently conserve it as soon as the regs go into effect. And then move that density to their thirty percent buildable as a run with the land allowable density. So it's not a reg that we, I don't think it fits within our purview. But being that we're the most knowledgeable of how this conservation P U D works, I wouldn't like, I would like to express this idea to the city council. And I don't know if I'm to do that as a resident of this community with knowledge or if we do it as a commission. So.
Yeah, it's.
Question.
Yeah.
Isn't, if, isn't taking, using the T D R internally and moving them to the thirty percent the same as what you just said, allowing them to take density from the seventy percent?
It is, it is the same, but what I'm saying is we can, we don't, those landowners don't have to sit around and wait, nor does the city. The city can just say, strike a claim. We're telling you, you have to do it. So let's just conserve that land now. You don't have to build those units, but you'll get them over there. But in the meantime, the city can pin that land and permanently conserve it now. That's going to be powerful.
I'm, I'm not sure of the mechanism that you're thinking of for permanently conserving it absent an application.
Well, that's be, it's a concert, if it's a conservation P U D, that's what I'm saying, i- in, as a one-time, and I also think the city should pay for the landowners to do this, take, you know, let, let the city, the city is, is requiring the conservation P U D because we're trying to increase our protections. So as a one-time measure while we're doing this, enable those N R, and those T D Rs to be moved, the buildables are just waiting in the holding pattern, run with the land in the buildable. It's, I, I'm a believer in find a way.
Right. Well, I guess essentially, Monica, if I can, if I can re-summarize, I think what you're saying is essentially eliminate the N R P district.
No.
Because in doing so, what you would have is you'd be required to conserve seventy percent of the land. It would be where you have the habitat blocks, which is largely coexisting with the N R P. There would not be no T D Rs to sell any longer, but they could be reused on the remainder of your property, just like outside of the southeast quadrant. Is that what you're saying?
Because the N R P district is very big. And I'm talking about specifically on the parcels where we're requiring P U Ds, conservation P U Ds. So I'm looking at this map.
Right.
Southeast quadrant.
Yes, and I'm looking at the pink boxes, right? So these are the parcels where we've said, okay, you must have a conservation P U D. So I'm saying, yes, the city should go ahead and pin those, those N R P related parcels and 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 take that acreage and permanently conserve it today.
Right, but the only mechanism to do that other than through a development would be to acquire them. Is that what you're recommending?
It's, or is it, if it, we're basically forcing, if we're forcing them to conserve it anyway.
But we're, I think that's an important distinction. If you choose not to apply for development,
Yes.
you're not forced to conserve it. You could wait fifty years and see if the city's zoning changes. There is no requirement to conserve.
That's right.
There's a requirement to conserve if you develop.
That's right.
Which I think there's, that's a very important distinction that we don't, you know, on day one that this is adopted, there is no required conservation on anybody.
Agreed. And and because that's been part of my concern, because we're giving other level twos the same option. I don't know what the mechanism would be. I don't know if it's legal. I, but to me, there's an opportunity here. We are, everyone who owns T D Rs is still sitting around waiting to figure out how they can sell them. And we're, I feel, doing some things without addressing that that are perhaps harming that marketplace. We may hopefully, as a next step, work to fix the marketplace. But if there is a way, I don't know what the answer is tonight. But I would like to further vet this idea. And as long as something, and if we, if we don't, if we're going to require it, then why not try and do that? Otherwise, why are we requiring them? Let, let, you know, I guess it's, there's separate thoughts. I, I would love to see those parts of the N R P permanently conserved as soon as possible and keeping the other N R P district because it, we've proven with all of our work through the Arrowwood study that the N R P does cover the primary connectivity for wildlife and the passageway throughout the city. So the N R P zone is still very important. I'm just saying, take this out, take, let the conservation P U D help us solve our T D R marketplace problem and permanently conserve this very valuable N R P land right away. And if it's a purchase that the city's making, whatever that may be.
I think the problem may be that uh that's a lot of money to buy all these T D Rs.
Well, let me clarify.
And, and the city probably has other priorities for.
But let me clarify, that's, that's why I said, take the T D Rs, the, the density allowable, and assign it to the buildable portion and let that run with the land.
We could do that today.
What, I, I guess I have a question um about, and I've, I've been wondering this and it wasn't quite clear in how it, it was talked about. So if someone does a conservation P U D, um, does that automatically tie up all the T D Rs from a portion of their property that's in the N R P? Or, or if they don't use all their units, would they still have some T D Rs that they'd be able to sell some other spot? And I think Sharon said, if you develop as a conservation P U D, you get a one-time usage to use all those. And if you don't, then you don't get to later sell the ones you didn't use.
Right. She was calling that double dipping. That's right.
She called it double dipping. She called it double dipping, and I just wanted to make sure that that was really the case.
Yeah.
Question, is it the case in the draft?
Right.
So it's.
Because I think that it doesn't address exactly what you're saying, Monica, but it would mean that in the case that someone does come forward with a development, all that NRP is permanently conserved, and if they don't use those units, they're not still flooding the marketplace.
Yes, no, I understand. It's just that's, then it's reliant on waiting for a development to happen, or, and on the other hand, it's. Well.
Any owner of NRP land can pass TDRs and can sell them.
That's, yeah, that's not mine.
But if they develop and use those TDRs as density, as a, for density increase, then they can sell.
That, that's not my, yeah, so my point is that as we introduce the, this new concept of requiring a conservation PUD, is there a way that the city can remove those TDRs from the marketplace? They're, they're staying on the same person's property. So all we're doing is shifting them from an area, we're basically proactively conserving and then moving that buildable unit to an allowable within the buildable area. And if they choose to never build those, it's the same thing as if they go to do a conservation PUD in 10 years. The difference is that we're proactively.
Right, I don't, I can chat with our city attorney about it, but I don't think that we have the authority to mandate a permanent conservation without there being a triggering activity that the property owner agrees to, i.e. an application or selling their TDRs or something like that. Because our authority is, is a regulatory authority to zone something. Zoning by definition can change in the future. So zoning itself can't place a permanent restriction. It can enable a permanent restriction via, you know, they apply to do something and then they've done it. But it cannot, I believe, by itself, just impose something permanent.
So if, to that, that's what I said, it's not really within our purview, but the city council could at least be educated about this concept, because perhaps the number of TDRs we're talking about just on these parcels would be then a reasonable number. And it's like, okay, well, maybe those are the TDRs that the city council purchases, and it's a limited number, but we're, but they're in this, you know, in exchange for us telling them they have to do a conservation PUD, and it, and it reduces what the marketplace balances. So that's why I.
We'd require a lot of changes, because thus far, the city hasn't been interested in buying development rights. They're interested in buying land. Because what you're suggesting is buying.
Well, then they're permanently conserving. They're, they're, well, no, they're then permanently conserving that, those parcels out of the NRP. It would be permanently pinning the land, and.
If somebody buys the TDRs, yes.
That's not what my proposal is, Michael, I understand. It's not what I'm suggesting, the city council.
Monica, I think, I think your idea is a neat idea. And I know one of my priorities for our next steps, and I know this is the next thing on the agenda, is to really look at the TDRs, because it's, we've been saying it's going to be one of the next things. So I think maybe this concept of how TDRs are used in different ways, whether they're transferred out of the Southeast quadrant, you know, how they're used in these conservation PUDs. I mean, I think, I think having maybe a conversation that talks about all the different places they go and how that happens, maybe that's part of that conversation.
That's fair, and like I said, because this isn't within the planning commission's purview, really, because it really is the city council making a decision about, do they want to buy something? Or do they want to look into legal ways of changing something? If, if it doesn't feel that it's an appropriate thing for us to discuss, I, as a resident, can just share the concept with my city councilors. You know what I mean? I mean, it's a, it's something that, that they can, it would be up to them. It's, it's, it's out of our purview, so I don't know which would be the better path.
I guess one of my thoughts is, maybe it makes sense in the context of the bigger program, and, you know, as we're kind of redistributing the marketplace, maybe this is part of that conversation. It might be confusing to the city council if we tell them tomorrow. But like, if we have a better feel for like the new, new receiving areas too, I think it might be a bit like a.
My idea was tying it to, the moment we require a conservation PUD on somebody, we make this part of it. If we introduce a requirement of a conservation PUD without doing this, and then go back and do it later, that, that doesn't feel appropriate. So it's kind of more about, if a conservation PUD is required somewhere, that further to that, the city will pursue immediately conserving that land.
They need it required, but they never have.
With, with what I'm suggesting, it would happen, because the city would basically purchase the TDRs, take the TDRs, move the TDRs.
The landowner may never decide to do anything with it.
But, but the city would be acting to pin the land immediately and permanently conserve it. That's what I'm, we're unproposing to them. It's theirs, it's their discussion, you know, it's how much, do they, how aggressive do they want to be with permanently conserving our most precious resources? And it's out of our purview, so.
If I can just sort of close out that part of the conversation with, certainly, any recommendations that the commission wants to make to the council, please go ahead. At the same time, I think it's very important that what you present to them from a regulatory perspective is able to stand on its own, or that you're saying that it can only work if the following happens, to not sort of mix messages of, it would work a lot better if we did this, or it might not work if it does this. The regulations really need to be able to stand on their own two feet. And certainly, there can be supplemental things that other things complement. But I just want to, would encourage you to, you know, think about, the regulation should work as the regulation.
Right, and I don't see the regulations changing at all in this idea, because it is not a regulation. We can't regulate that we're going to pin your land. That's, that we're out, the concept is out of regulations, and I wouldn't want to suggest that we tie them to the regulations at all. I just suggest the city council that strategically, if they're going to require a conservation PUD, then step up and conserve that land, pin the land right away. You know, find a way, or, or not, you know, but, but have that discussion. So if, if it's, if it, it sounds to me like, to keep it clean, it's not something the planning commission should pursue next. And I, being familiar with the conservation PUDs, should just tell my city councilors as a resident. Is that fair? I want, I mean, I just don't want to complicate, I don't want to confuse things here.
I'm not hearing that it's a recommendation of the planning commission.
Right.
You know, I think our recommendation is, through the land development regulations, use the tool of the NRP to protect that land. That's our message as a group, you know, because that's, that's the tool. And then, you know, what you're talking about is kind of like prioritizing the purchase of some of those TDRs in certain areas. And, I mean, I don't know.
You'd have to make that offer to every, every TDR.
Well, we don't know, that's, that's where it's a new, it's a new concept. And somebody, somebody with the knowledge would need to study that, and it's not us, and I don't want to add it to our plate, because it's not our purview. I just wanted you guys to know what I'm thinking, and I do feel compelled to get this idea to them, for them to consider. So I don't want to, maybe that's what I just do, and I'll keep you posted with that. Does that sound appropriate?
Yeah, I think if, as a resident, you want to do that, I think that's fine. And I think having it as part of our TDR discussion makes complete sense. Paul, we haven't heard from you yet, do you have any?
I have a couple things, yeah. You know, from the start, I wanted to give the Arrowood Report as the basis for, you hear me?
Why don't you take your mouse?
As the basis for the work we're doing. I didn't think, I don't think we should have edited the, the Arrowood Report. I could live with at least reverting back to the original Arrowood Report for both the long and the hill farms. We'd like to see that.
Okay.
And then the other issue is the, the minimum densities for PUDs. We should have the minimum, that's what it was for PUDs. Minimum densities for PUDs.
Yes, you can, can you repeat what you said?
I repeat.
Okay, I'll repeat it to make sure I got it right. So Paul feels like the Arrowood Report should have been the basis for our land development regulations and didn't want to edit any of the habitat blocks. And specifically, on the long and hill farm properties, would, would really specifically like those habitat blocks to go back to the original Arrowood Habitat Block. And then, as a second point, Paul is not a fan of the minimum densities in the PUDs and doesn't feel as though the minimum densities should be required. And is that for all PUDs or just for the conservation PUDs specifically? And I know we had some discussion about the, the, the density number. Do you, you're really saying you don't want any minimum, specifically?
Yeah.
And I, I know that that was something that we had a split vote on, and I think that, you know, that feels like an area that, you know, Duncan, actually in his notes, and I know not everyone maybe heard everything I said from Duncan, but he expressed a little bit of concern about not having as much time to really delve into the densities. So it feels like maybe that, at least that number is something we want to come back to following a public hearing, just to make sure we've revisited that, because we're hearing that from you, I saw it in Duncan's email.
I'd like to add to Paul's comments that I'm also not in favor of the minimum density in conservation PUDs. Because particularly where, where they're required in the SEQ. The SEQ is an area of, of low density development. And we, we, we had a maximum, so there's no, I mean, a minimum doesn't help the developer get more, because they can have as, as much density as they want, up to the cap of six, of 6U per acre. So why, why is a minimum necessary? And why are we, in doing so, I think the unintended consequence is we're forcing a landowner to build more than, than they want. It's their land, why should they be forced to build four units per acre? I, I think it would be, I'm not even sure that, we should get some legal opinion on this, that it's, that it's enforceable. But we've had, we had some very good discussions and options to this back in August. And Paul came up with one of the better solutions, in my view, which was to have, leave it up to the applicant to select, do they want to go with the minimum density? Or do they want to go with what he called large lots, but the situation where, where the minimum density is not required? I, I think we should eliminate it, because we're not, we're not doing so, it wouldn't prejudice anybody. Certainly not a developer, but it would prejudice a landowner who doesn't want to build that much.
Can I, can I share also? I'm trying to find a, and I don't remember, Jessica, if I sent this to you. Sometimes I get these ideas and find a bunch of links and then just send them to myself and CC people. But there are a lot of important resources that I think we should be aware of that discuss the negative environmental impacts of large houses and R1-type development. And I know that at some point, we're going to be looking at R1 in general. But to Michael's point, I do think that we should all be very familiar and aware of the negative impacts of that. And so I will find those links, because I found them to be very helpful and understanding, which made me feel much better about having minimum densities. So when I find those links, I will share them and review them at your, at your leisure.
Yeah, there's certainly many ways we can mitigate against McMansions in some other way. But the minimum density isn't, isn't the answer.
Um, I think, you know, the, the decision is entirely yours, and, you know, there, there aren't wrong policy decisions here. Um, in terms of how a developer might look at it, I think that there's two perspectives. One is that they might say, as Michael is saying, boy, I wish I could be doing less. The, and, and that very well could be the case in, in certain circumstances. The, the other part of it is, one of the challenges that the development community often faces is opponents to projects have historically, all around the country, sought to see fewer dwelling units. Fewer is better. And so numbers get pushed down and down, even if the result is, well, you know, I'd much prefer to see 20 homes there than 30 homes. Well, ultimately, for the developer to then make money on 20 homes, the homes get larger. And that's been something that's sort of repeated itself over and over around the country. And, and that becomes the sort of challenging thing is, if the, the, the minimum is a challenge, it's also a floor by which they can say, you know, sorry, neighbors, you know, I, I know that you want less. This is the minimum I'm allowed to do. And they're not sort of pushed downwards by legal appeals, et cetera, et cetera. And then they wind up taking the path of least resistance, which is, well, you know, the neighborhood can live with 20 instead of 30, so why don't they just build 20 larger ones? You know, if there's other ways to, to, to approach that and not have the result be 20 larger homes that maybe aren't meeting your, your municipal housing goals, then, you know, then maybe there's something to consider, consider that. So there are, there aren't easy answers here.
Well, it sounds like this is something that we've flagged for getting the public input and, and, you know, really confirming what's in the draft before it goes to, or, or changing the draft.
So essentially, tonight, we're having.
Our, our personal public input, yeah. Yeah, and I, this is super helpful for me. I guess.
You asked for bullet points, not narrative, so we've just stuck with that.
Yes, and, you know, so I guess, you know, I, and I did this for myself, and, and it's actually interesting to, and I, you know, I have definitely not voted positively on all things, but I think in balance, it feels like we've balanced relatively well. I'm really pleased with our improvements in Chapter 12. I think the one thing in Chapter 12 that I'm not super pleased with is still regulating the Class 3 wetlands. You know, there just aren't as great of standards, they're not as easy to kind of quantify and delineate, and, and they're typically not as connected. But I do really like our increased improvements and increased buffers on the kind of higher-quality water resources. So, so I guess I felt like, you know, it's fine that they're still in there, but, you know, if I had to kind of pick one of those resources to, you know, that isn't as important, it's kind of that Class 3 well, and it might be a little complicated to regulate. But I am really pleased with the additional protections they have for all the other water resources. So, you know, that's, that's fine. And then I think the other thing is, one of the things that Duncan pointed out. I think the other thing is one of the things that Duncan pointed out, you may not have heard when I said it in the first place, but I'll point it out that it is one of the things Duncan pointed out, and I agree is that. It would have been really nice to have had more time at the end here for these final drafts of the PUDs to just have some extra vetting and. Maybe dive in a little bit more to some of the details and kind of the differences between the PUD versus the subdivision versus the master plan and. You know, because I know we've been working on it for years and had drafts and outlines and such things, but these final drafts have kind of come pretty recently. So. That's kind of a piece that. You know, I'd probably feel a little more comfortable if we just had them longer to really dive into some of those differences between the different different pieces. So. Those were the things that kind of jumped out for me.
I'm on the side on the on the class three wetland. There is a class three wetland. The bottom of the proposed dog park. And the DRB. Has delayed their approval of the dog park for months and months, even though under the current regulations, not not regulated, but.
They are regulated by the city in the current regulations and the regulations require that you demonstrate that you will. That you've not affected the functions and value and that if you have that what you've done to mitigate it. So that's. So DRB has felt that.
Adopt those same regulations then?
This would have the same and possibly slightly stronger rules for them. Yes.
One of the things that I agree with Jessica was, I think the 300 square foot. Threshold is too small. And several. Members of the public and and developers raised that, I think Brian raised it. So that may be something that we could look at instead of 300 square feet. Make it. Six hundred square feet or five hundred, anyway.
I think I think Duncan at one point, I think Duncan at one point had said, why is it so small? Should it be closer to a quarter acre? And we did hear some public comment on that. So that was one piece.
You know, it's going to be 10,000 square feet.
Yeah, I think that I'm remembering why we didn't, or one of the one of the things that stood out to me is that a level three wetland could potentially over time become a level two, and there are level twos that are smaller than 300 square feet. So that was, in fact, that was the, I think I asked that in a regional, there was that regional person that was giving a presentation, and that was the answer. That was helpful to me.
Yeah, and that's in fact, that has happened to the wetland at the bottom of Swift Street that used to be class three and now is class two. But. The the circumstance of the one at the dog park. There's no way it can become anything else than what it is because it's surrounded by a parking lot on the one side and a hill on the other. So, you know, there are circumstances in which. We could say you you don't want to encroach upon it. Leave it at that, depending on the size and the and the topography.
Right. So, you know, an additional option for you. If you felt that you wanted to keep the regulation on a class three wetland, is you could eliminate the buffers. Right now, under the current rules, all class three wetlands have a 50 foot buffer, just like class twos. Part of the reason that you said in the 300 foot number originally was if it's less than 300 feet, the buffer is more land than the actual wetland. And so and to your point, I think of of something like the dog park. You know, it's it's I think it's largely the buffer being impacted.
I mean, I we all know historically that that wetland is now covered by what is apparently the market.
But I think that's a good example of the kind of circumstance where a class three comes up. They tend to be little dots in a lot of places.
But Monica's point is that if if they can be connected to something else in the landscape, then they should be regulated.
But I think by definition, they're currently not connected. Is also just part of their definition. But, you know. Okay, so. Any anyone else have things on this? Would you have some other things on the agenda? Any other thoughts or?
No, I I just, I mean, I would just say I I felt bad in the last meeting. I sent Paul an email saying, sorry if I felt like I was throwing you under the bus. When I talked about the us having not seen the language of the type of what how do you how do you what what is conservation, permanent conservation, whatever? And I did go back and look and I still I do not think we actually saw that language earlier, but I could be wrong. I don't think I think we saw. Language that was beginning to get there in terms of what is the way you conserve the land in a conservation PUD. But in fact, we have not seen. That as far as I looked back. So I I apologize for the concept of the bus throw, but actually we didn't. So I agree with your point, Jessica, that a little more time. To discuss some of those very important things would have been helpful. But I'm glad we met our.
So. Before we move on, Jessica.
Sure.
What are we? What are we going to do with? The inputs from you, from Bernie, from Duncan, from me, Paul. What's his name over there? What what are we going to do with this?
So I guess there's 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 two things. One, one is I have I have this list. So. When it comes time to present something to the city council, if some of these things are still not in the draft. I have some kind of bullet points of things that. People still thought were really important, but not in the draft, you know, to maybe explain if we have a split vote. I think the other thing is that now that we've talked through some of this, you know, we're going to get public input at the hearing, and then we're going to have a discussion following the hearing. Where we can maybe fall back on some of these things and say, oh, you know, I heard three commissioners that were really interested in this particular item. Let's revisit it and possibly have a vote to change. You know, commissioners, and then we also heard public input on this particular item. Let's revisit it and. You know, I I propose this and we maybe have a vote on some of these things, you know, if. You know, now that we've kind of revisited, heard a little more input, we're going to hear some public input. You know, I think this is kind of a nice basis for for having a discussion before it goes to the city council.
So on the 26th, we're just going to be this.
Well, you'll you will have the choice. So so the public hearing is about the public and their opportunity to weigh in. Following the closure of the public hearing, you are encouraged to enter the whatever dialogue you feel is. Necessary, useful to ultimately get to a vote. I will put it on the agenda that you may take action to vote on the 26th. Because if I don't put it on the agenda, then you can't. And you very well may be in a place ready to vote. Alternatively, the schedule gives a few days up to a week. For you to. Have another meeting to possibly take make changes and vote to give it to council. Unfortunately, there's not more time than that. Much as I'd love to find more.
But that's part of why I wanted to have this discussion tonight, because if there are, if there were really important lingering issues, which people have brought up, this is a good start to that conversation.
Can I suggest, Jessica, maybe we take all the notes from each commissioner's feedback from tonight and circulate them so that everybody can be sort of connecting dots in the next couple of weeks?
Mine, Paul's, and it's in sync to all commissioners.
Okay, and I just sent mine to you during my notes during this meeting, Jessica. But I actually on that, I the there is a time sensitive issue. Which leads me to want to make a motion to ask that we do, in fact, make that housing preservation update. Before it goes to the city council. And so I don't know if I should make a motion now.
Can can we make a motion following the public input? You know, you've brought it up. Like, I guess, I guess I don't want to do a lot of motion making now.
Can I get some clarification on that, though? Because not to, I want to be. Sensitive to Paul's time. And Paul had an idea for the language, but has not fully drafted it yet. The portable housing committee agreed. They liked the idea and they didn't offer language. I just don't want Paul.
Can we do maybe a straw poll if there's interest enough to have language drafted that we can look at? At the on the 26th, is that? Um, I'm interested in. Yeah, so.
Does everybody know what what Monica is speaking about?
So the idea is that on, this is a straw poll to see if we want staff to prepare language for 1803 C7. About enabling childcare in the.
Yeah.
Housing.
And particularly tying it to a. Housing fee in the event that the childcare closes, that the fee. Then be activated. For future use unless it goes back to being housing.
Okay, so I'm in favor of just seeing that language on that. Okay, so it sounds like yes, we would like that language drafted for consideration.
One one last thing. Paul had made some comments about the, you know, we should we should follow the Arrowood. With the original mapping. On the. On the long property or 1720, 1730 Spear Street and on the hill farm, in my note. I'm more I'm more particular than. Than Paul, because I think the piece that we took off at the very northern end. Adjacent to the highway. Willing to dispense with that, leave it, leave it the way we have it. What what I was more interested in. Is that we should add back the piece we took out on the southern end of that.
I do have that in my notes here. Yes.
I'm not sure if this is relevant, but you know, going back to the long property, having walked it yesterday. You know, the inner, you know, connect these neighborhoods. In this case, South Point and and. South Village. There's a. You can read sort of recall the map, but I'm not sure if we're doing any service. Either of those neighborhoods to connect them. It it's. There's no rational reason why one would go from South Village to drive into. To drive through. And I think my feeling is maybe we should consider it as a bike path like you were doing with Spear with Swift Street.
I think there is such a proposal. A path that would go from South Village through.
In lieu of in lieu of, you know.
No, I don't think in lieu of, but it would be, your point is well taken, through to the to the urban natural area. A walking path or a bike path. Actually, it's a bike path.
Oh, sorry.
Should have brought my attention. I was just chatting with elderly. Woman, and she said, you know, there's really a lot of traffic that that goes through here. And it would be even exasperated if. I don't know, I just, we're talking about interconnectivity. I should have had this feeling. I'd rather see more pedestrian activity.
You're right. They're connected along Spear Street anyway. These three developments.
By road.
Yeah, they don't need another road.
Yeah. You know, I think we need to get people out walking and biking instead of getting in their car and going a mile, you know. Eight double mile through a neighborhood. I'm not sure where that goes or how that's relevant to. I'd love to obviously, you know, see this preserve, but if not, you know, I'd love to see how we get the the road unconnected if it is connected.
Okay, anything else on this item?
Two things. So I was just going to report sort of broadly a couple of conversations that I've had, and then there's some folks in the public who. Had some questions that they wanted to share. So I I just wanted to report that I've met with several property owners. In various parts of the city, southeast quadrant, but also elsewhere. And it's it's been interesting that I've had. Three or four conversations in the last couple of weeks with folks who are. Sort of right on the edge of would they choose to be a conservation PUD or would they choose to. Take advantage of the the carve out. And they're sort of right on the edge of of wanting to do one or the other. And. Yeah, it's just an interesting observation that, you know, on the one hand, some of them were really interested in long term conservation. So the idea of a conservation PUD sounded attractive. Others like the idea of a carve out. But maybe wish there was a little bit more flexibility with that carve out and the ability to potentially do more in the future, which is, you know, that's sort of the the challenge of what the conservation PUD is trying to do is to be clear of what are the plans for the future. And then. One other one that sort of threw all of this out the window of. If there was a large property that somebody just wanted to divide into two or three or four pieces that were each fairly large. That's not really been in in keeping with what you've been thinking about of just dividing it into big chunks. But I'm seeing. Interest in doing that has been interesting. I don't know if they're going to come and talk at the public hearing or not, but. Just sort of a little bit of a micro trend of sort of right on that edge. Potentially, or at least of ownership. Yeah. In terms of comments, I don't know, do you want to just?
What was the comments about the car? Because it was a very contentious issue amongst us.
Well, I guess I would say that the people that I spoke with were speaking less about the rules themselves and more about, here's what I'm thinking about doing. How do they fit with the rules? So I had a conversation with one property owner who has a. 10 ish acre parcel and was interested in, there's there's one house on it. They've been leasing some of the land. To somebody else to do some small scale agriculture, and they wanted to know if I wanted to sell. A couple of acres of my land to this person to build a house and farm that and then maybe conserve the rest of my property. Could I do that? So that's one example, which, you know, it's right on the edge of that two acres. But they don't want to necessarily see more development on those two acres. They just want to see the one house. So in some ways, it might be better to be a conservation PUD of the whole thing with just two homes on it, because then they've known. That they've conserved the whole thing versus just selling off a piece that their hope is conserved, but then becomes 10 more homes that the next buyer owns or gets the benefit of.
Rob, but it's a conservation PUD and it's. That's not the current minimum that we're arguing about.
Well, they would need to, in that case, conserve 96% of the property. But then it becomes tricky because to be honest, the rules were not set up with the idea that somebody was building two homes. So they'd have to do a master plan that says, I'm just building two homes. So it's tricky.
It's a workaround, which.
Yeah, another one was interested in a similarly of could they build two or three homes? But then also carve out something that feels like it doesn't belong with the rest of the property and they're not contiguous with one another. And so, you know, then it becomes in that specific circumstance, it might make sense to do it because it's sort of disconnected pieces of a property. But it doesn't in total match very well with the idea of continuity. It's it's very hard to write rules to deal with individual circumstances, I guess is what I'm saying. So I don't I don't have a conclusion yet. I just wanted to share, none of these folks were necessarily looking to do this as public input. It was really just. I'm I'm curious of what can happen to my property. So I'm just sharing it in general without talking specifics.
On on the subject of carve outs, then, if if the property is NRP. The carve out that we've got, which is two acres and. And I believe it should be. But if it's two acres, then. The the property owner, instead of going to the carve out, would do something that we really don't want them to do, which is build. Three houses in the NRP. Their property.
That's only if the property is entirely. That's only if the property is entirely in the NRP. You do not in any circumstance have the ability to build in the NRP through any of these tools unless your land is entirely in the NRP and the property's not been subdivided since 1992. In that case, there's no carve out because you can just build the three homes and it has to be in a small area. There's, there's probably seven, eight that are in that circumstance. It's, it's not, it's not, well, one, two, three.
We just added two.
Five, six, seven. There's probably close to 10.
So it sounds like we might have some public questions or comments on this item. We also will be having the official public hearing coming up on October 26. If there's anything above now, you could unmute or turn your video on. Otherwise, we are getting ready to move on to our discussion about the work plan and priorities for fiscal year 2022.
Um, I will provide one clarification. Somebody asked about why a master plan is needed for conservation. And if somebody was either A, conserving all of their land, they would not need to do it. Or B, if they're in the NRP, that doesn't have a master plan. This is for somebody who is choosing to conserve part of their land and still build on part of it. The master plan is really for the building part of it.
Well, and when they're not choosing to, if they're, if they want to build and their parcel is deemed as requiring conservation beauty, then they also do.
Yes, but again, only if they're choosing to develop.
Yes.
That's the triggering motion of it.
So Sandy, I saw you pop up. Do you want to go? My first.
Hang on, Sandy. I have to increase the volume so everybody can hear you. Hang on just a moment. Okay, go ahead.
I think I heard Jessica say that you would be sharing all the commissioners lists among all the commissioners. Is that right?
Said, sorry, I'm just going to repeat what you said, Sandy, because it's a little hard to hear you.
Okay.
Sandy said, you thought that Sandy thought that she heard that the list of commissioners items would be shared with the public.
No, I said, I heard it would be shared with the commis, all the commissioners, which my point. And does, I, my understanding is that would make it, make those a public.
We can.
Is that correct?
They would certainly be public record if they are emailed. Yep.
So while I was asking.
Already provided it to Jessica. That's public record.
Okay, I was wondering if they could be all put together and made available to the public.
We have them as part of our packet for the next meeting. Is that okay?
Well, I would really like to see them before the next meeting. That's really not timely.
Can I, can I see them by going to the website?
Well, I'm going to put them together. We didn't even get them all.
I can do whatever timeline you'd like me to do, commissioners.
Well, if they can be put together so that Sandy and whoever else is interested can see them by going to the city website, that would be the fastest way for everybody.
I mean, that's, that's fine. That's fine with me. I mean, as long as it's within, no later than the end of the week.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of collecting them. It's, it's, yeah, the posting part's the easy part. It's making sure that we've collected them in a way that is accurate. So.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, because some of them are in lengthy word sentence format and some are more bullet.
And I had one other request, and that was, I think it would be very helpful for Sharon Murray to be at the public hearing. Because there ended at which she was present, her input was very helpful. And there are a lot of differing points of view among the commissioners. That's clear. And sometimes it's helpful. And therefore, sometimes I perceive sort of a filter in terms of not intentional, not intentional in terms of what people recall and don't recall. And I think it would be very helpful to have her there to make sure that, that we, we have her, her as a resource in terms of all of her knowledge.
So just so that everybody heard what Sandy said, she recommended that Sharon Murray, the city's consultant, be invited to participate and attend the public hearing to answer questions that may come up from commissioners.
Is that, have you asked Sharon or will you please ask Sharon?
I can certainly ask Sharon.
Okay, Paul will ask Sharon because I agree, Sandy. I think it would be helpful.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything before we move on to the schedule? Okay, we're going to move on to item. I guess it's technically four, which is our work plan items, which we had a color coded Excel spreadsheet in our packet.
So just as brief background on this, this is just for now, the rest of this fiscal year. So just until July or end of June this coming year, which as we know comes around very quickly. The goal for the city council for departments and for each committee is to then around April, May, set the next year. So this year is sort of a parcel year. It's something that our new city manager, Jesse, is working really hard with all of the bodies to get on a similar schedule. And then my only other note is you'll see that the first item, sorry, one of the very first items on the list, number eight, streamline incentivized development, redevelopment and built areas. I, I consolidated a lot of conversations into that one item, which is about TDRs. It's about the infill PUD. It's about NCDs. It's about your interest in making it simpler and more streamlined for people to build in those areas. It's been my sense that that's all the same conversation. And so it's not really about individual tools. It's about how do you accomplish that, which is why I just put it, I lumped it together rather than saying TDRs is one thing and infill PUDs is another. Because it's really, everything I've heard from you is, it's the same conversation. It's how do we incentivize development in those areas and find homes for TDRs?
It seems to me that finding homes for the TDRs would be a major subject of its own. That can be broken up in, within that, but putting that all together doesn't, doesn't give me a sense of what's, what priority is, what's important. Are they all of equal importance or did we prioritize that? I was hoping that the TDRs would be not number eight, but number.
Oh, no, they're number one.
Well, so one, the, the green ones are the, are, are helping the council to get through what you're just doing there, right? So everything else is not intended to be ordered. The colors are just, it's, it's ordered by color. So I didn't try to presume what should be high within this pinkish color.
So I guess, green, green is like almost done. It's like done and like follow up.
Right. And I guess I wanted to be realistic that council will get this on November something. They will probably have questions for you. And so as you think about your next nine months, I didn't want to just assume it's done, done, because they may have things that they want you to work on.
Well, I guess, I guess I didn't phrase that right. I guess I see those as we've already made the commitment because we're so far along. So if the council has questions, we're going to kind of do those ones. So I guess I see these, I guess it looks pink up there. These ones that are number two are kind of the next things we're going to work on.
There's one that's under three that I wonder if it should be a two, only because I know that since we've been working on IZ, we've had, there've been a few different zoning requests that we've put on hold and we said not until after IZ. And some of them are small, I mean, kind of perspective, but example, something about a medical use at the corner of Kennedy and Dorset. And there's a zoning issue there and the landowner asked us to look at that and we said, no, not until IZ. So there might've been some others as well that wouldn't necessarily be major discussions. But now that we're, you know, once we're done, we did promise to get back to those people. There was also something about a view shed issue. So I guess it's, it's possible in two years, but looking through to whoever we said will get back to you after IZ, just to make sure that we do circle back.
Isn't this something that each of us should send input to this and for about changes in priority, if that's what we want? I mean.
Yeah.
Monica made the point of something that she thinks should come earlier and the other things that maybe I think should go later.
So I know what we've done in the past, and this is completely valid. We could do this this time is to get this spreadsheet and each mark our number one through 10. And then we can kind of compile that.
There's a lot of.
So to and kind of see where that common ground is and come back with a reorganized table based on individual priorities.
A lot of change. But the other question is, you have numbers all the way down the line. Is this from, from the planning, from the planning department's perspective, the priorities of if you were sitting in our position, Paul?
I guess what I would say is I, I used as the starting point, the last work plan that you had done two years ago. That was the, that was the starting point in there. My real focus in this was those ones in the second half of the first page, the sort of pinkish ones, the ones that are up on the screen here, numbers five through 10, because I was really looking at this year. And so in looking at that, you've already decided that you were going to take on this airport parkway zoning. The climate action plan has been something that the city council has said, we're doing and we're asking all committees to provide feedback on. The, the transportation overlay district is something that you had engaged two or three years ago and the consultant sort of waiting in the wings to finish the project, their sort of pastime. And then I know that, and maybe, you know, Michael, I appreciate your point. The subjects that are in number eight have been the things that have risen to the top in your conversations of we've got to tackle this next. Whether it's infill PUD or TDRs or or just generally.
Two tough numbers.
Right. So that's how those ones rose to the top. The rest of them, I didn't really spend a lot of time on, to be honest, other than to make sure if there was a conversation that you have had in the last several months, like number 15 on page two, full review of UVM properties, you did say in the spring, you'd like to talk with them. So I said, my sort of summary of that is it's high on your list, but not higher than these other things. So yes, with your guidance is I guess my shorter answer to that, Ted.
Jessica, so number, meet with the DRB is down here and I'm just thinking, I know our hearing is in our next meeting, right? We don't have a meeting next week and then the next one's a public hearing. And this is so much information. It really would be fantastic to have a conversation with the DRB about any of their thoughts or concerns. And I don't know when, if, if there is even a
Prior to going to the city council.
Right, just so that if there's any major, you know, if there's anything that they're looking at and just saying, oh, you know, that's going to be a massive headache. It would really be nice to know about that in advance. And I don't know that we have, is it just an invitation for them to please attend the public hearing? Is it an offer to host a Zoom meeting with them that we would warn, I mean, something just to, it's so much information. And if they turn it down, then fine, but it just seems like it would be at least nice to, and I would be happy to sit in on an extra Zoom. That really, it's going to put time to call too, because there's so many questions we might get that.
It's the second item. I'm in the pink section.
No, I know, but I'm saying, I'm just trying to tie it specifically about this draft. It's just so much information. So.
Might help is for them to get the.
Yeah, that's such an amazing link. They get the link and then if we invite them maybe to a special listening session or something or appear that day or.
I guess I'm wondering if they have the capacity to anticipate where they might have issues. Like I know when we've met with them in the past, it's been really helpful to hear kind of feedback on the application of the rules to projects. And for them to say, in this project, this section of the rules was really confusing. It was hard for us to apply. You know, it'd be nice if you went back to this section and made it more clear. Or, you know, it seems like applicants have a lot of questions about this piece over here now that we're getting into it and.
Is it realistic to expect them to absorb?
I'm not sure that in a couple of weeks, they're going to be able to like get to that level of feedback. It might be just too overwhelming. And maybe, and I don't know. I mean, maybe Paul has a perspective, but it seems like it might be most beneficial to meet with them after they've used the new regulations on a few applications and really have.
Well, some kind of outreach. I mean, if they, if they do think they would like a listening session, you know, maybe a few of us volunteer, all of us, whatever, I'm happy to do that, at least to put the offer out. And if they do think they'd rather wait until after, then that's fine too. But I don't know if we've had since the last time we were in term zoning, which I don't even think we had this much information on that interim zoning. This has to be one of the biggest changes in one swoop that we're making since the SEQ was developed. Is that probably a fair thing to say? I mean, that's a big deal. So.
2016, probably.
The only problem with meeting with the DRB or the city council meeting is that these regulations are not regulations. The city council. And so we don't really know exactly what the regulations are going to be.
Right. That's why it's really just more of a, a big, big picture, you know? And, and that one, that new webpage is so helpful that I think it's, it's just the option to, the offer. As you see.
Well, I guess I'm not totally sure what to do about the schedule. If, if people are comfortable with it, we can say that this is our priority. Or if people are feeling like they really want to delve in and rank on their own secret rankings and then combine them. I mean, we could do that approach. So.
Can I make one additional suggestion? I may not have phrased number eight there, the streamlined incentivized development, redevelopment and built areas, exactly the way that it sort of maybe parses out for people. To me, a really good sort of starting point for that would be maybe step one of whatever it is is to lay out together as one of your very first meetings after you've given the other word to council. What are your objectives? What are your land use objectives that you're trying to achieve in those areas? To Michael's point, is the priority that you want to find areas for TDRs, regardless of whether that might have a beneficial effect or a slowing effect on Shelburne Road? Or do you want to do whatever it can be to speed things up on Shelburne Road, regardless of whether there's something that, whether it does or doesn't take advantage of, of TDRs or, or what have you, or anything in between? Maybe that's your starting point of what's your objective there? That's why I tried to put it as a single item so that you can actually start with what are you trying to achieve? Then go towards the tool for it. It's very easy to sort of get stuck in tools. That's my only.
I made that point about. I made that point about each of us sending in our comments on this plan because I can go through line by line here. It doesn't seem to be a good use of our time. And now, now quote plus nine.
And I, Jessica, I would, I do agree with Michael that just even perception wise, I absolutely would move up. Even if, if all these TDRs and everything are stuck into this one line, which is a lot right now. Anyone else who sees this, I would absolutely move that incentive, that one up to the first, the first thing. It's gotta be the first thing. That's, it's, there's so many important things that we need to do because of this draft and that. But it just needs to be sitting right up at the top.
Well, it sounds like we're not ready to do this. So maybe we can do the individual ranking on our own and come back.
Okay.
Few things to do.
We have.
Yeah. Don't you worry. Don't you worry. We've got things for you to work on.
We have things. So.
I would like just an anecdote. When I was at export service, I was traveling around the world mostly in Asia and sending stuff back to my office. Sent this guy quote for this, do that, do that. I came back to the office after tripping, somebody said, ah, Make Work is your middle name.
Yeah.
That's all right. They used to call me Rikers Island. Rikers Island. That always find a way to. And there's a well, there's a way.
Okay, so in interest of doing some things, like we said, we'll move on to item six, which is 600 Spear Street Solar Notice Application. So if you remember back, we had provided comments from our October 12 planning commission meeting, which I sent. No, that's today. Never mind. That was the wrong date. We sent.
July 26, I think.
July 26 meeting. And now that application has been filed with the Public Utility Commission. We have some additional information and they've provided some response back to some of our questions, which was all in the packet.
My sense is that their responses are pretty much satisfactory, that they've addressed everything that we asked them.
Okay, so we do have some options, one of which is take no action because we have provided comment and they have responded along with various other options here. So.
And just one quick note, Jessica, you asked us to get an example of what they meant by agricultural fencing. So this is, the same solar developer has built off Star Farm Road in Burlington. This is the fence that they have put in. This is what they're thinking of, is what they mean by an agricultural fence.
What appears to be missing there is the 16 inches of space at the bottom for criggers to get through. Unless the gauge is wide enough.
It supposedly is, according to the letter, from small criggers.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. Yeah, I wasn't sure.
Make that a, wasn't that one of our hopes that it would be up higher because there's boxes that want to get those buddies?
So what we, Monica, did you see the response from their wildlife ecologist about the presence of certain types of wildlife and then also the specific fence type? It was in our packet. So they did respond that the agricultural style fence has sufficient openings that are six inch by six inch, which would allow the small mammals to get through. And then they also talked about the large mammals. Given the absence of any specific corridors or necessary wildlife habitat. You know, just because of where it's located, I guess they.
You know, I think Monica's point is well taken. It may be not a corridor, but there probably are assorted boxes, but not packs of you know, coyotes possibly. So I might be.
Deer?
Well, I don't, I'm not even sure if there's deer, but I'm thinking.
I think that my concern about the deer was that the fencing would force them to go across the highway.
Okay, I was thinking that. I thought it was really that, a, something like a fox could then continue.
They could get through there.
They wouldn't be able to get through there, but if there was a little, if there was eight inches or something like that on the bottom, a fox or something could go and continue to pursue the rabbit. Whether that's important or not, I don't know. But it seems like at least it allows wildlife to have a little bit of a flow, but not the deer. And moose and bear.
Um, we did, I did speak with them about that and I can't remember where they landed. There's an, the, the solar array off the end of Dubois Drive has that gap. Part of the reason that they like this agricultural fencing, and I'm not saying that they have to be mutually exclusive, is maintenance of that gap at the bottom can be pretty tricky because grass wants to grow in there and it gets clumped and then, you know, it blocks it. And so they were excited about the six by six gaps all the way through because it doesn't have that maintenance challenge that, you know.
It doesn't go into the ground, right? The fencing is all on top because if they can dig under, they'll.
Right, right.
They'll dig under as long as.
The objective is right. But if your feedback is you'd like them to try to find a gap at the bottom that meets the rules, then I can certainly share that with them. I don't think that needs to be at the level of formal intervenor status unless you feel very strongly.
We already asked.
No, we, we were, we said no fence, you know, kind of without any other guidance. And, you know, they've came back with some more information and this proposal here.
Yeah. So as long as, as long as the fencing doesn't go so deep that the larger mammals, the predators can dig under it.
Yeah, okay. So, so it sounds like maybe we could give some informal feedback that we just don't want the fence to go below, the mesh part of the fence to go below ground. And, and yes, yeah, and thank them too.
We're not making any precedent that we're allowing fences. We are allowing this because the wildlife specialists have said that it's not a.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And I think I just also, along with that, thanking them, I was really pleased with the the pollinator and the trail. I mean, they really did take into consideration our suggestions and, you know, chose plants that were pollinators and provide actual food for wildlife. So I, I mean, I think it was a great back and forth.
You have one other business item on your agenda, if you're done with that one.
Which is what?
Which is, it's a pseudo-street name.
Oh, I love street names. Okay. Number seven, street name request, Larkin Way off Shelburne Road.
Right. So this is not actually a street. It is, if you, if you've ever been to the Comfort Suites and the, the, what's it called? The Sunset Ballroom. It's, it's up in there. There's a bunch of hotels and things. It's, oops, can't put it on the screen yet. Yes. So E911 says you can't have these buildings all just be claiming to be Shelburne Road addresses. You've got to call something in the middle of it. So they're saying call this thing a street that's sort of right in the middle there, even though it's not really a street for 911 purposes. It needs something.
Move to approve the street name of Larkin Way.
Hey, any discussion on the street name? Anything from the public on the street name? So where does it start? Does it start off of the there?
It starts off. At Shelburne Road.
Okay, so it's.
Yeah. So we'll have them delineate where that is, but yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, on favor? Hi. Unanimous? Great. Other business, we had discussed meeting schedule. Do we need to do that?
I think you're all set.
No, I mean, so did, are we not, we're not gonna offer a, a DRB listening session prior to the public hearing? Is that what we've decided? I think we decided that we weren't doing a special thing for the DRB until after.
I might suggest, and this might not be in the first three months, but as you're thinking about your work plan, consider somewhere in there being a just, if, if, if what you want to do is hear from them how it's, how it's going, you might want to put in your work plan of either sort of late this spring or next summer, some dedicated time to solving things that might come up. You know, as you did previously with the Form 8 code. So just sort of thinking about that. Prioritizing that because all these things are time.
So Jessica, can we at least do an outreach, letting them know this plan that we discussed it? We thought it would be more helpful to them if we met after and that we will save time.
Yeah, it seems like a.
Be more than happy to do that. We have shared the draft with all the committees. The information that you got today about those spotlights, I'm going to do another blast to the committees. And then over the next week, we're going to try to get them out individually to the public so that it feels like we're not just throwing a huge giant bucket of things at the public. So. They have to, the last day that they can do it, Paul, is Monday, the eighth of November to warn, to warn a public hearing. After that, they've got 150 days to do, to do their action. They would just as soon not wait to the last, last day, but realistically, you might need that time. It's tight. Yeah.
I bet it won't take very long. I think most of them have been pretty engaged. You know, a couple of them have attended the meetings and so on, I've seen. So, you know, it's not like starting on page one.
Are we still calling the city South Burlington? We gotta change that. Let's start with that.
Well, then, anything else? Then we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks for sticking with.